How come this list of money is so long this time? I think you're going crazy. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve item number four is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Hall, to approve item four through the minutes of July 8th meeting. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, no, I abstain, I'm sorry.
You can do number five.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve item number five as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Hall, approve item five on the agenda through the minutes of the July 22nd meeting, 2015. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Motion to approve item number six. It looks like we're spending so much money this time.
It's too much, there are two pay periods in this one.
Okay.
Could I ask a question with the last item? The EFTPS payment for second quarter payroll withholding the bullying of what?
They're holding the federal and state tax.
What we already have. I don't know, I mean, we put it as state or federal when we withhold.
Right, check this.
I'll second that.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number seven as listed on your agenda.
Number second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item seven on the agenda. The ratifier approved the so-stated seminar requested payments. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number eight as listed on the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item eight on the agenda. Ratify the hiring of Janine Conklin of New Melford to the full-time, non-union, full-time position of human resources. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number nine as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren, to approve item nine on the agenda. To ratify the transfer of Stephen Grant in market deposit from the full-time correctional officer open to the full-time position sergeant. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number ten as listed on the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item ten on the agenda. Ratify the transfer of Emily Gao of Matros to the full-time correctional officer to the open full-time sergeant position. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number eleven as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren, to approve item eleven on the agenda. Ratify the transfer of Cheyenne Daniels of Matros to, from the part-time custodial position to a full-time. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number twelve as listed on your agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item twelve on the agenda. The transfer of Amy Bishop of New Melford from the first deputy clerk of courts to the open non-union full-time position of jury manager of forty hours. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number thirteen as listed on your agenda with the correction of Rae Bell, spelled correctly, R-A-E.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item thirteen on the agenda. Transfer of Courtney Canfield-Hallston from second deputy platonicary to the open full-time union position of intake officer for forty hours a week. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number fourteen as listed on your agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren, to approve the transfer of Sandra Henry of Hot Bottom from second deputy clerk of courts to the open full-time non-union position of first deputy clerk of courts, forty hours a week, starting salary twenty-two thousand, increase to twenty-four after successful completion of six-month probation. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number fifteen as listed on your agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item fifteen on the agenda. Ratify hiring of James Guthing of Hartford to the open part-time position of corrections officer. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number sixteen as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren, to approve item sixteen on the agenda. Hiring of Pamela Labey of Kingsley to the open part-time position of corrections officer. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number seventeen as listed on your agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item seventeen on the agenda. Ratifying the hiring of Ashley Corbin of New Melford to the open part-time position corrections officer. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number eighteen as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren, to approve item eighteen on the agenda. Accept with regret the resignation of Christie Meredith Nicholson from the jail. Questions or comments?
What's her position here?
Christie was the, what was Christie at the jail? C.O.?
C.O.
Yeah, C.O. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number nineteen as listed on your agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, accept the resignation of Molly Edwards of Susquehanna from the Human Resources Department effective July 29th. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number twenty as listed on your agenda?
Yes, second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, approve item twenty, accept with regret the resignation of Caitlin Williams of Friendsville from the Human Resources Department.
Well, that takes care of my question.
Questions or comments?
So she's not a commissioner's officer, or is she?
Yeah, it's from the commissioner's office, the Human Resources Department.
No, she was hired as a switchboard operator at what company?
In the Human Resources Department, right?
What is it? I wasn't sure either, and you know, she was hired for summer help, so, I mean, we knew when she came, when she'd be leaving, so...
Well, it's a question of interest, not whether it's commissioner's office or Human Resources.
Really doesn't matter, she's going back to college.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number twenty-one as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren, to approve item twenty-one, accept with regret the resignation of Elizabeth Speacher from Carbondale. Questions or comments?
It just has listed courts, what was her position?
What was the question?
It just has listed courts, what?
She was a law clerk. She got a real job.
Law clerk would be...
She's a lieutenant.
She's a lieutenant.
Law clerk would still be helpful.
Okay.
And it says Acting President Judge Raymond Hamel. Is he, since when is he acting? Is this something new?
Acting, no, since the other judge you read, you told us.
Since January 1st?
Since January 1st? He's the acting president judge?
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number twenty-two as listed on your agenda?
Yep, second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item twenty-two on the agenda. To exonerate the Taxpound Bureau from collecting Lincoln taxes for the so-stated properties. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number twenty-three as listed on your agenda?
Yes, second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item twenty-three on the agenda. Sign the Child Accounting Profile System Application Service Provider Agreement with Susquehanna County Children's Services and Avanco. Questions or comments?
Could you briefly explain what they do?
It's all the accounting software for children and youth to track all the expenses and revenues and all the financials for it.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number twenty-four is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren, to approve item twenty-four, signing the consulting agreement between Susquehanna County Services, Children and Youth, and Avanco International and Fairfax, Virginia, which provides for necessary training and project assessments as so stated. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve item number twenty-five as listed on your agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item twenty-five on the agenda. Signing the Child Accounting Profile System Version Ten Upgrade Agreement between Susquehanna County Children's Services and Avanco. Questions or comments?
Do you have any figures how many children are in this, in this program in our county?
No, but you can get with our, see our children and youth director after, and he'll give you the numbers.
And, and he's here now?
She is.
She is?
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number twenty-six as listed on your agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, to sign the purchase of service agreement between Susquehanna County Children and Youth and Youth Services Agreement with Jim Thorpe for a term of July 1st, 2014 through June 2015. Questions or comments? Am I maybe we had that one?
Oh, one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number twenty-seven as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren, to approve item twenty-seven, purchase service agreement between Susquehanna County Services for Children and Youth and EIAHAB Human Services in Jamaica, New York for the term of July 1st, 2014 through 2015. And, I don't know if I had, am I understanding six youth?
What are the services?
So you have, that's primarily used by juvenile probation. It's used as a shelter care placement, but also residential, depending on what the needs are of the youth.
Are they being sent to Jamaica, New York, or it's just a company that you're using?
Jamaica, New York must be where their home base is, however, they, these youth are in Tonkana.
Tonkana.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number twenty-eight as listed on your agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item twenty-eight on the agenda. The purchase of a new 2016 utility police interceptor using Act 13 money. Questions or comments?
What is a police interceptor? Can you describe that?
Same question you asked me the last time. It's the same answer. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number twenty-nine as listed on your agenda? Is it my understanding the Skidsteers for the recycling center?
Yeah, the both of them.
I'd like to amend that.
Say that again, because I, before I go into it, twenty-nine, I want to know what thirty's about. Why do we need two?
We have two down there.
We do?
It takes two to operate.
And what's the matter with the two that are there?
They're old, worn out, and we're spending more money repairing them than we are...
Second.
I'd like to amend it to include the recycling center, that's where they're going.
Right. Okay, motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item twenty-nine, to approve the purchase of 2015 262 Skidsteer CoStar's pricing from the recycling center. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I guess this will further cut into the profits of the recycling center, right?
Yeah.
It'll further reduce the profits?
Yeah, there isn't any.
There isn't any, and there's no buyer at this point still?
Motion to approve item number thirty is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren, to approve item thirty on the agenda. To approve the purchase of 2015 Cadillac L242 from Cleveland Brothers CoStar Pricing. This one has two machines, the two machines are getting traded in on this one. And this one is ninety percent paid by the ninety-two, 902 grant, and then the balance from the general fund. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number thirty-one as listed on your agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item thirty-one on the agenda. Designing for the purchase of five new buses and two MV1 vehicles for TRHA, Susquehanna Wyomah County Transportation. Total cost of $345,000, fully reimbursed from the PA Department Transportation. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number thirty-two as listed on the agenda.
Should it also include that it's with the Susquehanna County Housing Redevelopment Authority in that motion? Because that's... I don't know. Yes.
What's she talking about?
This is housing authority.
Yeah, that's the Pennsylvania Housing Authority.
This is, apparently, Susquehanna County Housing Authority.
Part 32. Am I correct?
Part 32.
Thirty-two. I'm filing a proposal for that.
Could we include in the motion that it's with the Susquehanna County Redevelopment Authority?
Do you find with that Michael change?
I don't know what she's saying.
The resolution for that one, where the...
What, what I, what number are we on?
Thirty-two.
Did we pass it yet?
No, no. She's trying to do a second, but I want you to amend the motion to include the, with the Susquehanna Redevelopment Authority.
Well, that depends on what the resolution says. Does the resolution have it in there?
Yes.
Well, the resolution, if this is the resolution we're adopting and the resolution says it, I, right?
Right.
I say thirty-two's okay.
All right, questions or comments on thirty-two?
Could you elucidate on the purpose of this resolution? Thank you.
Housing Authority is here?
Yes, this is the impact fees that are set aside for affordable housing projects only by, administered by the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency. So we're seeking funding to construct some low, affordable housing in New Melford Borough behind our New Melford Creekside apartment building.
Impact fees from where?
From the Tele Shale. A portion of that is set aside directly at the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency for housing-related projects only, and it's grant funds that are competitive.
Who is eligible for this housing?
Thirty percent of the funds have to go to low-income individuals, and the balance could be up to a percentage of the median income of Susquehanna County.
So basically, this is coming out of the Act 13 money?
No, what this is, Bruce, is the money that's set aside for the, for the townships and boroughs, when they get over their cap, they're not, they're not, they are only allowed to get so much money. When they're over the cap, the money that's left over goes back to Harrisburg and goes into a big pool of money to go back out to these programs.
You're talking about Act 13 money?
It's a form of Act 13 money. It's not our Act 13 money.
It's what's over, you said, something like that?
Again, it's each township and municipality, based on the wells, based on the performance. It gets so much money in Act 13 money. According to legislation, they can only receive a certain amount based on the budget they have for their, for their area. If it's over that amount, whatever is over, they cannot get, that money goes back to Harrisburg and goes in to fund this program.
Geez, first time I've heard of that.
Is this limited to people who live in the, in Melford?
No.
So somebody from New York State could move in?
No, I'm not sure about that.
I don't know about that.
Might have to be a resident?
County resident.
Have to be a resident.
It would have to, it's somewhere on the application form?
I would have to check that.
Yeah, I wish you would, because that's...
You ask the people you want to bring up, or?
No, I want, I'd rather keep people who live in the county, take advantage of it.
Yeah.
Exactly.
We have enough taking care of others in this country.
And, and do you know how much this project's going to cost? Do you have a figure yet?
We're looking at about a million three hundred thousand budget for the construction.
You're constructing six units with 1.3 million, and what kind of units are they?
They're small ranch-sized, about 1,300 square feet.
So they're like separate houses?
It's a duplex, two together, shared by garages in the center. So it's all accessible at one level for someone that wants to downsize.
And it's behind?
Targeted towards elderly that want to downsize.
It's behind what housing?
New Melford Creekside apartment building.
Isn't that near the highway?
All right, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number thirty-three as listed on your agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item thirty-three on the agenda. Adopt resolution 2015-10, resolution for the County of Susquehanna, term cooperative agreement with Susquehanna County Housing Department Authority for administrative and Pennsylvania Housing Board Rebuilding Rehabilitation Enhancement Program. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number thirty-four as listed on the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren, to approve item thirty-four on the agenda. Adopt resolution 2015-11, resolution authorizing the filing of proposal for Pennsylvania Housing Board Rebuilding Rehabilitation Funds in the amount of $179,000. Questions or comments?
Where's that money coming from?
It's the same funding source. We're, we're projecting to utilize this to, to extend our ownership program in Susquehanna County. Our existing program is, is ending at the end of September.
Any other questions? So this one is through the, Mr. TRHA, right? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number thirty-five as listed on your agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item thirty-five on the agenda. Adopt resolution 2015-12, resolution authorizing the filing of proposal for Pennsylvania Housing Board Rebuilding Rehabilitation Funds in the amount of $119,000. Questions or comments? I guess the same question, $119,000, which programs that would...
This should be for a third-year continuation of our rental assistance program.
This is for the rental assistance? Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number thirty-six as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren, to approve item thirty-six, to sign the cooperative agreement for management responsibilities for fair funds between Susquehanna County and TRHA. Questions or comments?
Is there communication between commissioners and the, and TRHA regarding what goes on with terms of...
Actually, one of the commissioners sits on their board.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comments? All?
Well, I had a question on number nine, but I didn't get my hand up quick enough.
Go ahead.
Do you have a habit of hiring people out of New York? Or don't, or don't you have?
We try to, well, you know, we try to hire locally, but, you know, we try to hire qualified individuals too.
Well, I know some of your county people were questioned about hiring somebody like that out of New York. To pay taxes.
If we could find enough people, if we could find enough qualified people to fill all these positions from within Susquehanna County, we would.
You've got a sheriff department and everything else, that's why I wondered if there was qualified people.
They switch back and forth all the time, all, but there just isn't enough of them. I don't disagree with what you're saying, but we got to fill the positions.
Bruce, in the last five years, have we had an increase in the amount of children that live in the county?
I'm going to say we have a decrease, I'm going to tell you why. I know a lot of the enrollments in the elementary schools have gone down.
Have we had an increase in students who need extra help from all these services that we're paying for?
I don't know.
Well, see, that's where I'm going. It seems that even though there are less people in the county, and less children in the county, we keep, we're spending more and more and more for students or children who need more and more and more services, and I'm trying to understand why that's the case.
Go ahead, Director.
Well, on December 31st of 2014, twenty-three new pieces of legislation were passed, which increased the...
By who?
By, by this, the, by Harrisburg.
State legislators.
State legislators. It increased the responsibility of mandated reporters. It increased the responsibility of my agency and put penalties in, in effect for people who don't report things. So out of that, we have an absolute increase in reports received by our agency. However, the amount of time we're working with the families, I, I'm working on my plan actually for next year. The amount of time we're working with the families has decreased. The, the cost to keep children in placement does go up because of, you know, cost of living expenses for those agencies as well. So there's a lot of different factors. The youth that are coming into placement through juvenile probation have extensive issues. It's not just kids with maybe a little bit of, of A problem. We're talking about multifaceted issues that we have to address that require intensive services.
These are mandated programs?
It is my responsibility, if a child needs a service and they are in our custody, then I have to find what meets their needs. So whether it's a psychiatric evaluation that determines that, a psychological evaluation, and/or the court system.
Could you give me an, as close as possible, to a real number of the children that are servicing service?
We, in the 2014-15 fiscal year, serviced about, I think, 1,200 children.
1,200, and what would be the school population?
I, I don't know that.
They're down. I can't remember the exact number. I know, you know, they've decreased each year. I can't speak for every one of them, but I know the one that I was with, you know, in a four, five-year period, the number of kids went down in the school by, from like 1,400 down to like 1,100. And it continues to decrease. But the biggest issue, like she says, is, is that even though the number, number of kids are decreasing in, in the county, the mandated services that Harrisburg has put on has increased everything, so that we're providing more services and getting more calls that have to be taken care of because of the new legislation. I mean, there's even some counties that have basically doubled their entire staff to try and keep up with the new mandates.
I have a question for the Director, should I ask you, or should I ask?
Go ahead.
In your estimation, what are the three biggest reasons for this increase in social services and the increase in the children?
Well, the, the biggest increase for our placement numbers at this point has a lot to do with the drug issues in Susquehanna County. There is a significant amount of opioid and methamphetamine addiction, and that directly impacts, and in those cases, it's directly impacting a parent's ability to safely care for their children. A lot of our, a large proportion of our children in foster care at this time are under the age of probably eight.
Okay, that's one.
Well, I'm sorry, what else?
Any, any other reasons that, for the increase in the need for all these...
That's the primary, that's the primary reason for our increase.
What about the breakdown of the family? Do you find that to be into a factor?
I, I would say yes, that would play into, you know, children needing, needing services.
Would you say, you know, whether the family, these families that have the children in need, do they have at least one person in the household working, or not?
Some do and some don't. It doesn't, it doesn't, socioeconomic status doesn't necessarily play into child abuse or neglect or drug addiction.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Can you give a report on the latest road conditions and how things are going? And the new roads that we have, like 706 has been repaved and redone, and 167, are they up to specs according to what you know?
As far as we know, on resurfacing projects, they do comply with the specs for the resurfacing. The work continues to be done. 171 out of Thompson, 29, and 2067, there's a couple other ones yet to be resurfaced this year. Those contractors are expected to be in the area end of September, end of September, beginning October to do those roads. As far as the other road conditions... As far as the other road conditions, you know, PennDOT is still saying that their issue is financial. They have no money to do the repairs on the road. They've lost a lot of federal money because our federal government can't seem to do anything but a continuing resolution and not be able to do their jobs, so we have no budget. So their last proposal was to do a, I think it was a six-year transportation plan, but only fund it for three years. So I don't know how you get that...
By the way, that funding for three years, every dollar is borrowed.
Right. And I don't know what you do for the other three years, you put them all on vacation or what, but, you know, it's a total disaster. Pennsylvania's lost a ton of money from the federal government as far as road maintenance, which has created a huge problem for PennDOT because now they're trying to backfill what they've lost from the federal government. And then there's still not enough money coming into the state of Pennsylvania for the maintenance that needs to be done here. Although they passed this, you know, tax bill and increased the fuel tax and everything, I mean, it's going to be many, many years before you see a huge impact of that doing anything for the county. The bigger concern is the structurally deficient bridges in the state of Pennsylvania and Susquehanna County, trying to get them replaced before they have to just close them and put a road closed on, because there is so many structurally deficient bridges.
I have one question to follow up on about the roads. Do they have enough money left for fog lines?
For what?
The white -- the white line on the...
Well, you know, and, you know, I don't want to say yes, because here's the thing, I think it was two years ago, they had a proposal that they weren't going to paint any lines on the roads at all.
So it would just look into the trees for walkers at night?
Yeah, so although I would hope that they're going to paint the white lines on the road, I, you know, I can't say for sure that's going to happen. I have another meeting scheduled in October with them to sit down and discuss some more of the issues.
Will there be another public meeting with PennDOT? Do you know of any new public meetings coming up?
No, but you're by all means free to call George Robertson, Dunbar, he's the director for PennDOT for this area.
And then, why are the federal funds so much less at this point?
Because federal legislators continue to cut funding to the roads in Pennsylvania.
Just Pennsylvania, I mean, other states too?
Well, all over the states, too.
All over the country?
And they don't have a budget. So, you know, right now, they've extended the transportation bill for three months with their last continuing resolution.
They haven't had a budget since 2008, there.
And do you know when Route 11 might get done? Because it looks pretty bad.
It's scheduled in two years, and that's what we're fighting with right now, to get back on the federal highway maps and get that done with federal highway money.
Thank you. And then I was also wondering, have you been able to find the test results for the jail that are usually done by the DEP or the DEP standards?
The D E C, but, yeah, the water tests for the office?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have those, and we'll give them to you after.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you all for coming. Can you give your...